Good evening. I'd like to call to order the March 3rd, 2021 Special School Committee meeting at 5:02 PM. As a preliminary matter, my name is Keith Sullivan. I'm the chairman of the Tuxbury School Committee. At this time, please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda this evening are present, can hear me, and consent to being recorded. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mr. Jamie Cutlass?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I consent.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon Demos?
I consent.
Thank you. Mr. John Stadman?
I'll respond in the affirmative.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Scott Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Shannon Demos.
Someone have their TV on. Is Mr. Wilson?
I see a calling user. I do not see the identity of the calling user right now. Jason, if you could help us.
I believe that's for the speaking part, so I'm going to just move them to the lobby right now.
Okay. We'll come back to that. Our staff superintendent, Mr. Malone?
I consent.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent, Mrs. Regan?
Yes, I consent.
Thank you. Mr. Libya, Business Manager?
I consent.
Thank you. Our Principals, Ms. Judy McGinnis?
I consent.
Thank you. Mr. John Weir?
I consent.
Thank you. Mrs. Karen Cronin?
I consent.
Mr. Jay Harding?
I consent.
Thank you. Mrs. Felicia Czazanovic?
I consent.
Thank you. Our Director of Services, Mr. Rick Palatier?
I affirm.
Thank you. And Ms. Alexis Bosworth?
I consent.
Thank you. I believe that's everyone, and the Chair gives consent as well. Good evening. This open meeting of the Tuxbury School Committee is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order due to COVID-19. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with the agenda for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. To participate, call into 781-565-8134. Also, anyone who pre-registered to comment will be taken first. I would ask that you please wait until after the presentation and deliberations are concluded before calling in. For this meeting, the Tuxbury Public Schools is convening by WebEx as posted on the town's website, which identifies how the public may join, view live through televised cable channels Comcast 22, Verizon 34, or at youtube.com/TuxburyTV. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and aired live, and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that people may be able to see you, and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. The agenda has been provided to members of this party. The agenda is available on the district website or by request. You can email gailjohnson@gjohnson@tuxbury.k12.ma.us for a copy of this agenda. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless otherwise noted. A quick review of the ground rules. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer while you are not speaking. Remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. And if anyone has a comment or question, it can be submitted in the chat window and will be recognized by myself. For any responses, please wait until I yield the floor to you before speaking. And if members wish to engage in discussions with other members, please do so through the Chair. For the Citizens Forum, that will take place after the agenda items and presentation from the district regarding the proposed phase-in schedule. Those who have pre-registered will be queued in a virtual waiting room and will be taken first. In past meetings, we have learned that some residents have had difficulty in getting through, and we hope this new system will help facilitate more efficient communications. Residents who are not pre-registered are encouraged to call, and I will announce once all our pre-registered callers have spoken, and at that time, we will start taking additional callers. Please remember, if you are not pre-registered, to give your name and address for the record. So listening input from our families and stakeholders has always been a priority to this board, and it's why we have scheduled this special meeting tonight. Tonight is simply a discussion regarding our proposed phase-in schedule, and we still have our regularly scheduled March School Committee meeting next Wednesday, March 10th. If for some reason you are not able to get through tonight, please feel free to reach out to either the School Committee or Superintendent if you have any input or questions regarding the presentation tonight. Finally, any vote taken tonight will be by a roll call vote. Mrs. Regan, do I see Mr. Wilson with us yet?
I do not see Mr. Wilson, but I can tell you that we have three additional administrators, Mr. John Bernard, Principal of the High School, Ms. Terry Garrish, Principal of the Doing School, and Ms. Karen Baker O'Brien, a Director of Student and Family Support. They've all consented to being recorded in the chat.
Great. Thank you very much, and welcome. With that being said, the March 3rd, 2021 Special School Committee meeting will be televised and recorded. This is a virtual meeting via WebEx. Due to the recent open meeting law policy set forth by the Governor during the current state of emergency, the meeting will be held as a virtual meeting. As I said earlier, to participate, please call in 781-565-8134 in view live through televised cable channels Comcast Channel 22 or Verizon Channel 34 and/or at youtube.com/TuxburyTV. And with that, I would like to turn to our first agenda item, the discussion of open negotiations with the TTA specific to more in-person time learning. Mr. Malone, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all. Certainly, we've been working very directly with the Tuxbury Teachers Association, specific to our return to school this year, negotiating multiple models, and in particular, over the past couple of months, negotiating for more in-person learning time for students. We have been meeting regularly, in many cases, weekly, if not multiple times in the week. We believe that from tonight's meeting and some of the planning that we've done, that it's important to make sure that we've got the staff members' input into all of the aspects of students returning to school. And in conversations with the TTA President, Mr. Bilow, there has been a willingness to look at open negotiations in this format, specifically looking at more in-person learning. We do think that will be a helpful element, due to the fact that most of the concerns discussed in those negotiation elements certainly have a direct impact on our ability to have students back in school for more in-person time. So with that collaborative effort and the willingness from the Tuxbury Teachers Association, we have brought forward to the School Committee to approve open negotiations, which would entail, in this current pandemic and with these current restrictions, videoing of those specific negotiation sessions and having them aired to the public. We're trying to determine right now whether that would be live or taped, but it would allow the community to see the items that are discussed and see that the agreements that are made, and certainly, it would allow the community to certainly be much more aware of some of those issues that are ongoing, both with the district and the Tuxbury Teachers Association, for a better understanding of what exactly is impacting our ability to have students back more in person.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Malone. With that, I'm going to open it up to my colleagues, and I'll start with Mr. Cutlass.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just agree with Mr. Malone, what he says. I think the community wants to see the negotiations. I think it's beneficial for them to be open and transparent negotiations, and I'm fully in favor of this motion to engage in open negotiations relative to in-person time and learning. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Cutlass. I'll go to our clerk, Mrs. Demos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too echo Jamie's comments. I do believe that the open communication would benefit all stakeholders in the community, and I too approve this method of negotiations.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Demos. Mr. Stadman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with both my colleagues, both Mr. Cutlass and Mrs. Demos. I believe, you know, the residents of Tuxbury, you know, need this, need this, and, you know, we've kind of been operating in the dark, if you will, and having this being available to the public and open to all to see is a great resource for everybody and available for everybody. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Stadman, and I agree as well. I think it's a great idea that we're able to have the type of transparency from everyone, and that our community is going to be able to see exactly where we're at and what's going on. With that being said, Mrs. Regan, I've reached out here to Mr. Wilson, and he's having some technical issues. I don't know if maybe you could...
He's on.
I am here now. Sorry, Keith. I kept clicking on the link, and it kept telling me the meeting hadn't started, and I knew it had because you were texting me, so I am now live. Thank you.
We're just, I'm not sure if you heard the synopsis from Superintendent Malone regarding having open negotiations about more in-person time?
I did, Keith.
Okay. Do you have any thoughts or comments or...?
No, I think it's a great idea, and I think we should, you know, I'm looking to see us move forward with that.
Great. Would someone like to put that in the form of a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make that motion. My only question is, do you have negotiations start tomorrow, and should it start with tomorrow or next week?
We do have a schedule for tomorrow. I think we can get broadcast out. We have the 4th, and then I think they started in on the 10th. So I think we can, I think we can get notice over to the town and have it broadcast starting for tomorrow.
All right. With that, then, I'll make a motion to begin open negotiations with the Tuxbury School Committee and the Tuxbury Teachers Association relative to more in-person time and learning commencing immediately.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second to engage in open negotiations with the Tuxbury Teachers Association, specific to more in-person learning time, commencing immediately. Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye as well. That's an unanimous vote. Thank you very much. Moving on to the discussion of the phased-in schedule, I'd like to turn the floor back over to our Superintendent for a presentation this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Ms. Regan is going to present on the screen PowerPoint that will follow along with. Thank you once again for everyone being here tonight. Thank you for everyone who's tuning in at home. We wanted to take this opportunity to present our planning, our phased-in approach to some of these aspects moving forward. I'd like to review the goals of kind of what we're setting forth for this evening, which is to propose an initial plan for a phased-in approach specific to more in-person learning for TPS students, and also to further explore stakeholder input, solutions to obstacles, and information gathering to support a formal plan to be voted on by the School Committee in a forthcoming meeting. So most of the planning that we have done is fairly detailed, but there are some open-ended questions that we'd like to look at, and we'd also like to get some School Committee feedback and community feedback to this in relation to developing a final plan for next week. Ms. Regan, thank you. So one of the big questions would be, why are we looking at this now? What are the aspects going on in Tuxbury? One of the things we certainly have to recognize is that everyone is working very hard. The current hybrid model is very strenuous. Any attempt of education in the pandemic is going to be stressful for all involved. We're very proud of our teachers, our aides, our custodians, our secretaries, our nurses, our cafeteria workers, our administrators. Everyone has really just done an outstanding job pulling together and trying to meet the needs of students under some pretty extreme circumstances. And these circumstances have been going on a lot longer than any of us have expected. So one of the aspects we're looking at with our priority of student safety, and certainly during this pandemic, we want to make sure all students and staff who are coming to work every day are safe. We're also concerned about some other emerging issues that are a result of this pandemic and our inability to have students in every day for a full day of school. We're concerned about the gaps in their student learning and engagement. Although, again, everyone is working extremely hard to make the hybrid model work, it certainly is no replacement for full-time schooling. Our students are missing pieces because they're not having that in-person education. Our staff is doing an outstanding job with both teaching students in front of them, at home, remotely. They're really working hard. This is a significant lift for them. But again, some of the unintended concerns that we have is that the longer we have students not fully attending school every day, the more of these gaps will begin to exist. We're extremely concerned about the student's social-emotional development. Some of the more recent data that's come out around emergency room visits for adolescents, health and wellness concerns developed by students who are isolated, students who are not socializing at the rate they're typically used to, the constant fluctuation in their schedule about who's at home on one given day, who's in school, the inability to connect with peers, the inability to develop a clear, comprehensive relationship with teachers, with aides, with those professionals who are really there to help them be educated, and to also help them with some of these social-emotional problems, whether it be clinicians or others that can refer them out to additional help. These are very strong concerns that we're seeing in our students every day, and we're certainly sure that parents are seeing this at home as well. We're also concerned about the significant amount of screen time, although we're extremely proud of the technology advancements we've made in the district over the past couple of years that put us in the position to support students in both a remote and a hybrid environment. We're concerned about the amount of interaction students are having that are solely based on their technology device. We're missing out interpersonal connections. We're missing out some of those true, real, hard purposes of attending school, and our students are missing out on some of those interactive experiences that make school special for them. We're concerned about the aspects in regards to parent and family needs. Childcare has been in a complete upheaval for many of our parents, with daycare centers and childcare centers closing, with their inability to balance out going to work every day and having to provide childcare for their children who are in a hybrid situation, and in some cases, a remote situation. So we know that this has been strenuous on families for childcare. This fluctuating schedule, although we think is productive in that it engages students in school, is difficult for a parent who is working full-time to manage, when they're in work, when they're not at work. It's even difficult for our parents who are working remotely. It's difficult to work remotely from home if you have young ones at home that you also need to provide care for. We really feel that the family support that really grounds our students educationally comes from that normal aspect of family life. And we do believe that if we can achieve more in-person learning time, that will allow families to go back to do what they do, which is interact with their children, support their education moving forward, and provide that structure for our students on a regular, consistent basis at home, while, and again, support them while they're at school daily. Some of the information that we've been considering, certainly, we're very concerned about stakeholder input. Our town-wide reopening task force, which has been meeting weekly since the beginning of this pandemic, has seen significant information exchanged and significant concern by members of that task force to make sure we're maximizing every opportunity to have students back for full in-person learning. Parents on the task force have had long conversations and feedback with other parents concerned about this aspect. We've talked to medical personnel as part of this task force and done a lot of data sharing on this task force, and really, the task force is committed to supporting our students returning to school in full. We've done a community-wide parent survey that we released the results to. We've done several surveys over the past year, but we've done a recent one specific to students returning for more in-person time, to look at some of the models, the barriers, what parents' thoughts are. Overwhelmingly, parents believe it's time for students to return to school. We've had a town-wide PAC meeting recently where that aspect was echoed amongst our town-wide PAC members. The parents really feel strongly that they want a plan, and they want to move forward in bringing students back to school. We've conducted student surveys at the high school. We've continually collaborated and negotiated with the Tuxbury Teachers Association. Once again, we meet with them weekly and sometimes even more often than that to discuss the specific elements that impact their working environment and how we can work together to make sure all of our staff feel safe every day going to work. We've recently had a staff survey done in conjunction with the TTA, and certainly, our staff or predominantly our teachers and our aides certainly have concerns over safety in regards to all students returning. We are certainly motivated to work with the teachers' union to try to mitigate those situations and provide opportunities where we can increase safety. We do believe there's a balance here where we can balance out staff safety and have students return to school. We've looked at neighboring districts and collaborated with them. Many of them are in the exact same position we are and are moving in this direction as well. Many already have. And if that's happening in neighboring districts, we're certain that we can make it happen in Tuxbury, and that's what we want for our Tuxbury students. We are also mindful of new DESE and state guidance for more in-person time. The DESE Commissioner, followed up by the Governor last week, certainly addressed the concern around student learning time in relation to remote and hybrid learning. There will be a Board of Education meeting this Friday specifically designed to determine if the Commissioner is going to be given the authority to make the determination that remote learning, in hybrid learning, will no longer count for student learning time. We think it's a main premise of everything we've been looking at in Tuxbury all along, but the community should know that there's another element at the state level that is certainly pushing to that end as well. As part of the reopening task force, we very specifically look at weekly data. Most of that data revolves around two aspects. First of all is the percent of rate of community spread, and the second one is cases within the district. We have been on a trend, certainly for the last month, around community positivity rate. Our current rate as of last Thursday was 2.98%. What that means for us, and certainly those of us who have been on the task force and looked at this data regularly, the town of Tuxbury, and really, this captures the region and the state as well in a pretty similar dynamic, has not been this low since early last fall. As a community, we're in the yellow. We're on the low end of the yellow. We've been in the yellow for a month now. This is certainly a trend in the data that certainly pushes us to believe that the current community spread rate is favorable to students returning to school. We had been in the red for a long time, but like most cities and towns around us, we are now in the yellow, and we think this is favorable data to make this move now. In addition, the school cases, our current dashboard that we have on our website, which is updated in real time, has been in single digits over the past week. We have not seen single-digit cases at the school level, again, since early in the fall. This is significant data that is certainly pointing us into the direction that now is the time. The trends in the data are telling us that the scenario is safer, and this is the time to make the move. We're also continuously learning about this pandemic. How we approached this last March, when all districts in the state went remote, how we approached this over the summer to open up in the fall, and how we approached the implementation of the hybrid in the fall, has all been based on data that we've known at the time. Unfortunately, we've all started to become experts in this pandemic and been able to manage some of the struggles and the unknowns that go along with it. This pandemic is certainly nothing that we can control. It certainly continuously changes. However, we continually grow in our ability to try to address the needs of our students, our staff, and the community in dealing with this pandemic, and our confidence has grown in our ability to provide in-person schooling for our students. A specific element that we get asked a lot is in regards to Remote Learning Academy. Currently, the district is not looking at any in-person models that would impact the current RLA schedule and RLA staffing. So the plans that we will put forward and propose this evening do not impact how we are currently conducting RLA services for students. As far as a potential for RLA students to return to in-person learning, in our original reopening plan, we specifically identified that any changes by parents in that matter would be done at quarter four. We will assess what the level of room and space we have at that time, if there are RLA parents and students that want to return to the in-person learning. We are hopeful that they will, but we want to make sure if we're doing that, that we have the appropriate spacing, and then we can make sure it's a safe situation. This is, you know, separate from the piece that tonight, we're really talking about as a priority to add more in-person time for our in-person hybrid students. So the planning and the pieces that we're going to talk about moving forward in this presentation do not relate to RLA. Currently, we have no plans to make adjustments in RLA moving forward. Certainly, one of the challenges that we're going to face and all districts are facing at this time is staffing challenges. We have a great deal of staffing concerns around safety. Certainly, staff have issues in their own home life and medical issues, and we feel we have been extremely supportive of that. We have staff... We have staff that have been out all year on American Disabilities Act accommodations, where they have been unable medically to be at work, but they have been working remotely, predominantly teaching remote learning academy students. We have a large number of staff members who receive accommodations for childcare. Unfortunately, what's happened in relation to this pandemic is that most districts have been left on their own to make their own decision about the best approach, particularly in a hybrid or remote situation, that leaves many of our staff members who don't live in Tewksbury, and in some cases, those who do live in Tewksbury, having to juggle their professional responsibilities and their ability to take care of their own children at home. We have accommodated a great deal of staff members in regards to their childcare. We're appreciative of their sacrifices. We hope that they're appreciative of us giving them the accommodation as well. And we also have a number of staff, over 20, specifically dedicated to the Remote Learning Academy. These staff members are working with those RLA students. We have a commitment in to from DESE to ensure that we do have a remote option for parents. We have feedback we've received from parents that they are certainly comfortable with the RLA program as it is. We want these students to progress at the same rate our hybrid students are. So we have a commitment to the staffing in that, into the programming in that, and we will continue with that. But with these staffing considerations, as we talk about moving to a full day of school, these are going to be some of the barriers we're going to have to move beyond. Just a review of some of our current mitigation strategies. We've, thanks to our business manager, Dave Libby, he's done a great job procuring PPE to include mask gloves, gowns, face shields. We continue to look at what's the best, what's the most efficient, what's the safest type of elements out there. We're not going to stop looking for PPE that works for our staff. We've invested a tremendous amount in upgrades in our HVAC system to include MRF-13 filters at Tewksbury Royal High School, and individual classroom and office air purifiers throughout the district. Our cleaning protocols, hats off to John Marshawn, our maintenance foreman, their ability to to go out and purchase cleaning products and pre-cleaning apparatus to support regular day-to-day cleaning, enhanced cleaning, and we've even brought in contracted officials to bring in even a real deep clean in support of that. We're very proud of those cleaning protocols going on and the evidences and the safety that we've seen amongst our staff and students. What's on the short end of the horizon is pooled surveillance testing. We've been messaging out with that a little bit. We're going to be piloting with our staff to begin with some of that, and if that works through with the pilot, that's something we would move forward with with students. We're also looking at developing further outdoor spaces with the use of tents and other open areas that as the weather gets better, we hope to use those spaces for students to offset some of the crowding we may see in the classrooms. And again, we're looking at enhanced PPE opportunities. We're going to look at developing even further, more intricate cleaning procedures to support students coming in every day. And we'll look at alternative mitigation devices that are new and improved that support the fact that moving from half the student body in an hybrid schedule to all students in daily will certainly mitigate the safety concerns around that. Just some new guidance that's out. One of the concerns we've had all fall and in the opening this year was around transportation. There's new transportation guidance out that revolves around some of the same things we were doing with assigned seating, open windows, masks, hygiene and regular cleaning of those buses. We'll continue with those, but the numbers of students on the buses has been altered in the new guidance and allows us for a larger number of students on the buses. And some great work again by Dave Libby and Tewksbury Trans has revealed that we are confident that we can get all students in daily using the transportation element. So that's good news as well. One of the aspects that we're looking at that's going to make a huge difference in students returning is our current reopening plan identifies as a six-foot distance between individuals. In order to get all students in, and every district is looking at this very aspect, is that we're going to have to reduce that amount from six feet to a minimum of three feet. Some of the current distancing science around that is the Center for Disease Control. They definitely promote six feet between people in areas with substantially high community transmission. Currently, we don't have a high community transition transmission. And alternatives with physical distancing is not always feasible. So certainly, the CDC is more in favor of six feet. We do believe with our mitigation strategies in our lower community spread that that offsets some of that concern. The American Academy of Pediatrics believes that desks should be placed three feet apart. The Mass Public Health Experts, which is assembled by the governor, believe that mass public and private schools have opened with as little as three feet of distance and have proven with other mitigation measures, in-school transmission is extremely rare. The World Health Organization, they believe that it maintains a distance of at least one meter thirty-nine inches between individuals. DESE believes that six feet distance is good where feasible, and a minimum of three feet when all other mitigation measures are in place. We believe we have strong mitigation measures in place. So we believe that indicates that DESE is in favor of the three feet. There are many districts around us that have already looked at and have gone or about to go to three-foot distance. Drake, Shawshank Tech, Methuen, Tinsborough, North Middlesex, Burlington, and many others. Certainly, the distancing piece is a concern of ours. We believe the science proves that three feet can be safe. We are expecting some further information from DESE regarding the three-foot distancing next week.
Okay, thank you Superintendent Malone. I'm going to talk a little bit about the distancing in our phased-in approach for Tewksbury Public Schools. We just heard that differing scientific leading entities say that distancing is a key factor in the safety protocols and mitigation strategies to avoid spread of the virus. We're looking at three to six-foot distancing. We know that our parents, approximately eighty-four percent of our current hybrid parents, are okay with a minimum of three-foot distancing, and that that data comes from our February 2021 Parent and Guardian Survey. We also acknowledge that many of our staff members are concerned with three-foot distancing. It's a topic of anxiety for many of our educational staff members. Therefore, we certainly are considering maximizing the distancing between teachers and students in as many areas that we possibly can. Again, distancing is only one of the safety protocols and mitigation strategies. I want to note, and it's important for all parents and staff to note, that all safety protocols will still be required regardless of distancing at school. Those include masks, hand hygiene. And this key, this key protocol that we have been very successful with, people staying home when they're sick or symptomatic, or someone in their household is positive or sick. We've employed that enhanced cleaning and look at improving that. And certainly, six-foot distancing where possible will continue. We know that when the distancing is at the minimum of three or more, contact tracing will most likely increase where needed. Contact tracing, again, has been one of the leading causes, I think, for our success in not having spread of the virus at school. And then I just want to make note that our current cohort sizes, our in-person hybrid cohort sizes, cohorts A, B, and C, are very low. When we bundle them together in the phase-in approach that we're about to talk about, our average class sizes with all three cohorts in the class range between twelve to eighteen. We have very few bundled cohort sizes that hit twenty. And what I want to remind everybody of and show you some images. If you remember back in August of 2020, we showed you that our classes could at a minimum fit the number of desks or tables we needed to keep our kids at a minimum of three feet apart. What you're looking at here is our kindergarten through grade four, three-foot distancing images we showed you in August. At the Heathbrook, we know at three feet, I apologize if that says three inches, we know we can get twenty to twenty-two desks or tables, seatings at a table within our K to two classes at the Heathbrook in Doing. At the Trahan and North Street, what you're seeing over here to the left is that we know we can get twenty-two to twenty-three desks in those classrooms. What you're looking at here now is the Ryan School and the Wynn School. And you can even count the tiles on the floor, if you will, but you can see, and I want to make note of the number of rows. At the Ryan School, we know at three feet apart, we can fit twenty-two desks or more in most, in all of our classrooms. At the Wynn, we see twenty-four desks. And you can see this little corner of the teacher's desk here, knowing that a teacher's desk is thirty inches and the room behind them to move their chair is approximately the same. We have a good six-foot distance from the teacher chair to the students. But I want to go back to the cohort sizes that I was just talking about at all of our grade levels. Imagine here we have six rows of four, and that's twenty-four. If we have twenty, we take out a row, and now we spread those desks out. If we only have twelve, I'm sorry, sixteen, we can take out another row and we have further distancing between desks and between teacher space. And that's the case at all of our grade levels. Here, we're looking at the high school, grades nine through twelve. We know that our classroom spaces can fit three, at three feet minimum distancing, twenty-two to twenty-six desks. And again, we have the plus because we have four large space areas that could that could house our larger class sizes if needed. Right now, as we look at our cohort bundling of all of our hybrid in-person, we only have at this point three classes at the high school. And out of the hundreds of classes we have going on throughout the week that would use those large spaces, keeping in mind those large spaces are available every block of every day, we feel very confident that bundling those hybrid cohorts together in person at three feet or more is doable at all schools.
So some of the challenges and some of the feedback we've gotten from staff are specific to concerns around lunches at school. We would anticipate initially certainly continuing with the grab-and-go lunch. It provides efficiency. It provides us flexibility around where students may eat, and it's easier for the cafeteria staff to work through. So we see no reason to move away from that. In addition, currently, DESE guidance in cafeteria would utilize six-foot distancing between students. There is new DESE guidance coming out expected next week specific to lunches. The reason for six-foot distancing in the cafeteria because that is a time at which students would have their mask down eating. So it is a concern. The distancing would increase for eating, whether that's in the cafeteria or an alternative location. In addition to that, alternative lunch blocks and/or alternative lunch locations may be needed in some schools. And flexible to think about where students may eat besides the cafeteria. If we have the ability to eat outside, if there's a tent available, if there's other open spaces that allow students to space out in the in the school, we would be able to utilize those as an aspect to ensure that we have the appropriate distancing during lunch. Lunch at school may require several additional staff monitors. If we move locations, we have people spread over a larger space, that's certainly going to require more people if it's needed. We do know it's still a concern for teachers and aides monitoring lunch. Again, that concern goes down to the fact that even though there's a minimum of six-feet distancing currently, students would have their masks down, which is new for us. It's not new for many districts, and I would venture to say most districts in the state have been managing lunches effectively. We will certainly be able to go out and look at some districts and look at how they're operating. There's multiple forms of mitigation that can be utilized in the cafeteria that would support that beyond even the six-foot spacing. So we do know it's a concern for lunch, but we do feel that's something we can mitigate and certainly make everyone feel safe about. Some additional factors coming in is certainly the DESE pool testing. And again, the purpose of that is really a surveillance testing to look at non-symptomatic individuals. We did apply for the pilot and were accepted. That process has moved rather slow at the state and vendor level, which then prompted DESE to move that free pilot to not end in March, but actually end in mid-April. If we move forward with that pilot and parents and students are asked to sign off on being part of that, it is simply an opt-in. It's voluntary. There would be a significant sign-off and consent prior to taking any swabs of students or anything like that. We are currently collaborating with the TTA for staff in regards to this pool testing. You know, many staff feel it's a good thing, some don't, so we'll work through some of those mechanics. But it's a great additional piece of mitigation. And right now, with the free pilot through the state, it certainly makes sense to pursue that. COVID vaccinations for educators, certainly the most recent news coming out from the governor today, moving educators and those working in school districts to a March 11th initial vaccination date to be added on to the current sixty-five and older and to mobilities. This is great news. It puts teachers a little bit higher up on the list with a little bit more accelerated of a date. We've been working with the town. The town had had some available slots for teachers just yesterday. And with limited notice, we were able to bring some teachers in to have them available for the vaccine later on to get appointments. But we'll continue to work with all of our staff to make sure everyone gets vaccinated. We do think this is a key element in safety. It's a key piece in the mitigation. We do know it will just make all of our staff feel much more comfortable. Unfortunately, we don't have exact control over when, where, and how that can happen. However, we'll support any effort to get all of our staff members vaccinated as soon as possible. And another piece to remember is if the data that we talked about changes, if the positivity rate increases, if we have evidence of school spread, we can pivot backwards to the current model we're in, which is a hybrid model, or even to a remote model. And we can do that effectively. We can do that with limited time. And we can do that effectively because we've done it. We're doing it right now. We've done it before. So we have experience in this. So our ability to pivot back if we need to, if there's a safety concern, is there every day. And that will not, because we moved to more in-person learning, will not affect our ability through the task force and every other means to assess the current data at hand to make sure everyone's safe. We'll continue to do that regardless of the situation.
Okay, I'd like to begin explaining our phased-in plan, and I'll start with the proposed Phase One. There are two portions of Phase One. I'm going to, the goal of Phase One is to get all of our hybrid students, again cohorts A, B, and C, returning to in-person learning five days a week, but under the current hybrid schedule. So on or about April 5th through early May, the first part of this phase would be to bring back all elementary students, grades K through six. That's the Doing Heathbrook, North Street, Trahan, and Ryan schools. Again, all cohorts A, B, and C will be in person for the four-hour cohort day. I want to just acknowledge, and we certainly understand, these are our youngest students. This will much like be the first day or the first week of school again, which is why we phased in grades seven through twelve after. This gives us time to make sure we're transitioning with the full bus route, all the students back in the classroom, but maintaining the same schedule they're used to. On or about April 12th through mid-May, we would bring all of our grades seven through twelve students in the seven through twelve cohort A, B, and C students in person for the four-hour cohort day. That would be the Wynn in the high school. I'm going to show you what those schedules will look like. They're not different than what our current They're not different than what our current families and teachers are used to, but you'll notice that you don't have the breakdown of the A and B cohort. You have cohorts A, B, C. The mode is in-person. We have Monday through Friday, you can see now the red or the pinkish colored blocks are the same timeframes as they are currently in a hybrid. It's the four-hour day with three core courses, and those breaks, we're certainly going to need those. The students then travel home, have lunch, and a movement break and recess. And then this pale yellow, this is the time of the day where they'll have their remote specialist block, and then that final core block at the end of the day, where the core teachers are checking in, supporting, and then our, some of our service teachers are supporting our students at the end of the day. In grade five, six, and the five, six schedule is much like the Wind Middle School schedule. You can see again, you don't see those blue columns because A, B, and C students are together in person. They'll have their homeroom and morning meeting, they'll have their four core courses with their team teachers. They'll be traveling home at twelve oh five for lunch and travel in that movement time. Again, they'll go to a special remotely from home, and then have that core remote learning time again, or support time from other specialists. I want to note in this Phase One approach for our elementary schools or for our Ryan and our Wind, we still will have a separate Wednesday schedule. The start and stop time are the same. We just have that extra specialist block where students are now receiving that in-person at school, and then they travel home at the same time on Wednesday. They go to their remote special, and then they have that check-in time or support time at the end of the day. The Wind schedule, I won't walk you through the whole thing, it's much like the Ryan, they just have differing start and block times. At the high school, again, this is Phase, the, the second part of Phase One, on or about April twelfth. So we've identified those dates here. This is a continuation of the waterfall schedule that would have happened the week before. But now you notice again, A, B, and C are in-person. They continue to pick up those waterfall classes all in-person, while our RLA students are concurrently online synchronously in those classes. They will travel home for that lunch and movement break, and again, pick up with their waterfall schedule that fifth block remotely and have that advisory remote time at the end of the day. Okay, so some rationale, some rationale around Phase One is there's a focus on safety, continued focus on safety and bringing in the new guidance. The stock tapes allow us time to plan out these details at each school. So giving us that until that April fifth and twelfth, let us plan out the transportation, the spacing, the bringing the desk back in the class, things like that. So it, it, the trans-, it transitions in gradually and brings our younger students back first, which is the goal. And it follows that existing schedule as we just said, so it doesn't shake up the routine. And as Superintendent Malone suggested, if we had to pivot back, we could do that simply with that schedule still operating. It also allows time to implement and updating, update these distance protocols. Students are used to walking six feet apart and on those dots, and we'll, we'll maintain that, but there'll be more of them. So as I suggested, much like the first week of school, some new routines will have to be set. And then this allows us some time while we're transitioning into more in-person students to staff, recruit staff and fine-tune our plans for Phase Two. So let me describe our proposed Phase Two. The goal of Phase Two here is to now bring all our hybrid students who are now all in under the hybrid schedule in Phase One. We'd like to now keep them five days per week, all in for a full day or a longer day. On or about May third through the end of the school year, our goal would be to have all of our elementary students, grades K through six, attend that schedule, I'll show you that in a minute, with all of their cohort peers for the full day. Again, that's the doing Heathbrook, North Street, Trahan, and Ryan, all cohort students in person for the full day under their traditional schedule. And when I say traditional schedule, that's the schedule that they were in prior to March eleventh last school year. On or about May tenth through the end of the school year, so the following week, we would like to bring our grades seven through twelve students from the Wind and the High School in for a longer in-person day. The rationale for this proposed Phase Two again is a focus on safety, new routines, and the new guidance that we're receiving. It prioritizes our elementary students for the full day of return, which Desi has required us to do at this time. It allows for more in-person time at the secondary grades, which are students. I think if you remember, the Superintendent Malone talked about a student survey, which they so desperately are asking for. It begins that process of addressing those gaps with students in person with us. And certainly the social emotional needs of our students being in school for a longer period of time, not only participating in academics, but that social time that they have with their peers. And gives us the data to inform our future program in going into the summer and into the fall as we try to reduce and begin the, the startup of a regular school year. So we know, because we've been very successful at our hybrid schedule and our cohorting, by phasing in these longer in-person days and times for all students, we can easily respond to any conditions that may need to move us forward and backward. I'm going to show you an example of a full day schedule for grades K through four, and I, I don't want to make light of the fact you don't see the P, you don't see PK, because right now we are still exploring how we provide for longer in-person time for our PK students as well. That is still in development, and we will report where we are at the beginning of Phase One with that. But let's look at a day in the life of a kindergarten through fourth grade student. Again, this is a full day scheduled with A, B, and C cohorts all in person. And you can see it's all red or pink, because every block of their day, running on the schedule that they would have had last school year, is in person. So they'll have their three cores, they'll have their one special, they'll have that longer lunch and recess, and then another core block with their teacher or their classroom teacher at the end of the day. This is one example, this specialist block and the lunch block certainly would rotate at differing times for different grade levels. And similarly, at the Ryan School, grades five and six, our elementary school would have a full day schedule with cohorts A, B, and C students all in person. And what you see is here a schedule, a day in the life of a Ryan School student, and they start with their homeroom. They'll have their four cores, and sometimes one of their core courses may be split. We call that a split block, where they go to specialists. These specialist blocks do provide our contractual prep and common planning time for our teachers. So they would go to a specialist, they would have lunch with their peers, their homeroom or team. They would come back to their core classrooms, all four of them. They'll have two specialists in the day, so they'll have their second special and then dismiss home. Right now, our longer in-person time for our grades seven to twelve students is still in development, those schedules. Again, we will prioritize a longer in-person day for those three cohorts. We know we can do a minimum of one additional hour in person for our students from the Wind and the High School. We can include a designated snack time for every student. We know we also are looking at the potential to ramp up for a full day with lunch. Grade seven through twelve schedules, as I said, are still in development, and we will be looking at additional staff considerations to be determined. For example, the impact, many of our seniors go out on a senior project in April. How many of those staff members will be available as we bring our high school students back in for a longer period of time? So we're looking at all those features as we move into Phase Two, and that Phase One time will give us the time we need to adequately prepare for a longer in-person time in all of our grade levels, but at seven through twelve, a little bit later. My apologies, it doesn't want to move forward, here we go.
Okay, and, and, and next steps. Certainly, a lot of work has gone in to every implementation of education this year. It's been very strenuous on all parties involved. We thank our administrators, our teachers, our aides. Custodians have done a great job, our school nurses, our calf workers, our secretaries, all our individuals who work here at the center school, all our technology people have just done an unbelievable job, and everyone's working extremely hard, and we thank them so much for everything they're doing. We do believe that the next steps will be fine-tuning some of these pieces, certainly recruiting staff members that can support supervision of students during the school day. We know where we need to go, particularly at the K six level of what our needs are going to be to certainly get to that full day. I think this plan allows us the ability to phase in this piece and prioritize our youngest, most needed students to get them in-person first. But it's a significant undertaking, but it's something I think we're all confident that we can do. We know it's in the best interest of our students in the district, and we certainly thank the school committee for their support on some of these pieces, and we look forward to your comments and your questions. Certainly, we would consider all elements of this over the next couple of days in our follow-up planning. Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Malone, and I'd like to open it up now to my colleagues, I'll start with the Vice Chair, Mr. Cutlass.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I just want to say a, a great thank you to Superintendent Malone and Assistant Superintendent Regan. I, I know they worked a million hours on this and spent a tremendous amount of time developing this plan. And I, I for one think it's a fantastic plan. I think they put together a great plan to get all the kids back in the classroom as quickly as they can, as safely as they can, and in their best interest. They, Mr. Malone discussed all the mitigation strategies that we have in place, the sanitation, the ventilation, the cleaning, the, the distancing, the, the different levels of explanation on the distancing and why it's safe. We know that by April fifth, millions of adults will have already been vaccinated in Massachusetts, and probably a significant number of our teaching staff and other staff members will be vaccinated by then as well. So I just think it's a fantastic plan. It gets the kids back in the classroom, that's the best thing we can do for our students, the best thing we can do for our families. And I, and I'm thrilled to see them come forward with this plan at this time, and I just think it's outstanding. And I fully support it a hundred percent, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cutlass, I'll go to our clerk next, Mrs. Demos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I definitely thank our superintendent and assistant superintendent for the thorough presentation. There was a lot of time and effort put into that, and it's much appreciated. I definitely agree that we, we should be moving forward in getting more in-person learning for these students. I personally see on a daily basis what this pandemic has done to these students in an academic and social emotional way. I do have a bit of a concern on a couple of the, the items we talked about though, and I'm wondering if it's just maybe so early in the plan that it'll be worked out. But when I'm looking at one of the slides that talked about the cohorts and how many chairs can be fit into each one of those rooms, I am concerned with the numbers that we have up there, saying that, in particularly looking at like the Trahan, North Street Elementary numbers of twenty-two and twenty-three desks. I know that maybe each building is different, but even each room within that building is different. So I'd like to just look more carefully at the cohort numbers and the classroom numbers to be sure that we're looking at the square footage in the classrooms and not making it a cookie cutter number, because I'm not sure that twenty-two and twenty-three is a true number for those solarium-sized classrooms. I fully support the fact that we're going to have all the safety protocols in place, that the masks and the hand washing and the sanitizing, I'm not doubting that. I, I'm just a little hesitant with the numbers of desks going into some of these elementary classrooms. I just, maybe, maybe I could have an opportunity to take a walkthrough with Mr. Malone or, or Ms. Regan to see it myself, maybe visually it would help.
Mr. Malone, could we make that happen, please?
We certainly could. I think one of the things to think about when people think about a traditional elementary classroom is the amount of things that are in the classroom besides student desks and the teacher desk. We have already done a complete exercise on trying to trim down some of these classrooms. We will do that again. Certainly, there are materials and items that are necessary for instruction, but in some of our older classrooms that have significant counter space and other aspects like that, much of that can be cleared away to open up even further space, and that's a huge exercise in which we're underway. But absolutely, we can walk through and look at different, different pieces. The classroom themselves and square footage, typically the older the classroom, the more square footage it has. What we have is, as Ms. Demos hit on, is we have some odd-shaped classrooms, we have some odd-shaped fixtures, and we may have to make adjustments to some of those. But again, those maximum capacity seats identified in the pictures exceed typically what we're talking about as far as the numbers of students that would be going into those classrooms. Those are max seating numbers in, in those classrooms.
Right, so that's why I wanted to kind of look at, you know, even cohorts according to the class, the classroom assignments, just to make sure that we're staying true to our, our numbers and, and that it's safe for both the kids and the students to be coming back at those numbers. I do think that we're on the right track, you know, having heard that, you know, even our local pharmacies are putting out vaccinations for educators even as early as today. I know it's, it's hard getting on there and getting them. I, I played that whole game of, of, you know, try to log on early type of thing, but hearing that the educators are going to be pushed up to March eleventh, if we're looking at implementing this starting April fifth, it gives a few weeks in between. So that is promising, because although I'm not sure that everyone's going to want one, everyone will at least be able to have that opportunity if they so choose to have their vaccinations by that point. You know, looking at the TTA survey that was shared, it was quite telling to see that we had thirty-eight point sixty-four percent say yes and thirty-eight point sixty-four percent say no as far as there being in favor of more in-person learning time, because I think that now, I'd be curious since this announcement came out with the vaccinations for educators being pushed up, you know, would we see that twenty-two point seventy-one of undecided teachers out there change their mouth to a yes, I'd feel comfortable with the masks with the three feet? And, you know, since we're going to be pushed up with the vaccinations, because I think we need to be cognizant of the fact that these surveys went out prior to this announcement where the announcement was just so, you know, announced. So I'd be curious to see that. I do want to, to say though, that I really do think that it's important getting them back in, and that it, as long as we do that, our due diligence and making a robust plan of re-entry and staggered in a meaningful way, I think that we will get all those learners back in regardless of their age level. But I do want us to be aware of the different buildings, the different classroom sizes and things when we're looking at these numbers as far as getting them back in. That's all I have right now, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Demos. Mr. Stadman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank you both and everyone else that contributed to this. Definitely an undertaking and a very, very good presentation. to this. Definitely an undertaking and a very, very good presentation. You know, a lot to take in. Yeah, it's, you know, personally understanding that, you know, getting these kids in there, you know, understanding myself, you know, the strain that it takes on these kids, knowing that it's going to take a lot to get these guys in here. But yeah, it's it's a, sounds like a great plan. Looks good. Hope that everyone takes this and wish you guys luck getting the the TTA, get on board with this. Hope it go forward with us. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stadman, and Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, I would say that, you know, I think I think it all starts with a thank you to the superintendent and assistant superintendent, along with the business manager, and really your your whole leadership team. I know that, you know, if people on the outside looking in heard the announcement this week and thought, oh, they're going to change gears and they're going to start trying to do this, you guys have been working on this since the summer, and you guys have put this plan, you know, many variations of this plan together. So I think you made it look easy when you put it on paper, but I know that this is not something you whipped together in a week. I know that you've been gathering the data, studying what's been going on, and really making sure that we make an informed decision based on all the information we have. You know, what I'd say to the teachers is, look, I'm excited too that we have the ability now to maybe get many of you vaccinated, and I'm excited about that opportunity. I'm really excited for the teachers also to get back into school and and have the ability to do their job, because I've listened to people talk about teachers and what they are or aren't doing, and I know that under a hybrid model where you're in and out of different models throughout the day and trying to reach so many kids and you care about the kids, that it's a really, really difficult thing to do. I know that this year has been challenging. We appreciate you and what you've done. But I would say for me, this all comes down to one thing, and that's the kids. And I think the kids need to be back in school. I, you know, I just came off a basketball season where I coached some kids, and, you know, you quickly are reminded that what they need right now is that social interaction with each other, and that's equally as important as what they're learning in the classroom. So finding ways to increase that, you know, learning time from, you know, 20 hours every two weeks to 20 hours every week, I think is a tremendous, tremendous effort. I think it's the direction we need to go in. I know there are things that are scary out there that we don't know, and that no plan is perfect. But I think this is the right plan for us, and this is the right plan for right now. And, you know, a special shout out on a second second note to Dave Libby on the on the tents. I know that you were well ahead of the curve on those, and having those, you know, delivered and, I mean, ordered and ahead of the rest of the world trying to order those, great job. Just I think there's been a number of things that we've done right, and I'm just so proud to be part of this team. And thank you so much for all your hard work and putting together such a thorough presentation. And, Mr. Chairman, thank you to you for all the time that you continue to put in, because it's way above and beyond, you know, what a typical year would bring. So thank you for that. And with that, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I'm not going to reiterate, but I share all of my colleagues' excitement and also gratitude, not only to our teachers, the district leadership teams, and really importantly, I think, and I don't think that the superintendent's got enough credit for this, was the foresight to have this task force, and not just that, but once we actually got back into and we voted on a plan, it was, you know, his leadership to say, hey, let's keep this thing together so we can meet, we can have stakeholders meeting every Monday. And I don't think we would have got here today where we are without and it's not just him, you know, all the professionals that are on it, the health people, the Board of Health, community members, it's they've been a tremendous asset and a tremendous help, and I'm not sure that we'd have this presentation today without their help and their support. So thank you to them as well. I'm excited to turn it over to Jason for our callers, and we certainly welcome everyone's input or any questions. One final thing I will say, this is a first step. This is a proposed plan. This isn't the final plan. This is the direction that we want to head. We're still going to work with our union regarding the impact of these plans. And as I said, if you have questions or you can't get through, please email myself, any of my colleagues, or the district administration, and we'll get your thoughts and concerns heard for sure. So with that, Jason, can we go over to the room that you have for callers?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So currently, we just have one person waiting, so I'm going to admit them now.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, the call in user is in the room.
Great. Hello, you're on. Hello.
Hello.
Hello, you're on.
Yes, hi. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name's Peter Foster. I just have a quick script here that I'd like to read, given the time here. At this point, why are children not in school five days a week all day? Other states like South Dakota have full time in-person learning, the majority, if not the entire year, without a mask mandate. Is there a different virus in that state? Add to them recently Texas and Mississippi, and let's not even talk about Sweden. If a state like that, along with private schools in our state and surrounding states, can have in-person learning full time, why can't we? What seems to be a missing link to make this happen is the teachers' union, not the teachers, but the union itself, and how it operates with the administration. Our kids' education is essentially being held hostage because a group of grownups can't put them first. We keep moving the goalposts, starting with 15 days to flatten the curve, to slow the spread, to stop the spread, to creating a vaccine, to now everyone must be vaccinated while still wearing masks, distancing, and locking down, because it doesn't stop transmission. This thinking has crept into our schools and is disgusting. Now more than ever, we see that education doesn't equal intelligence. We have unnecessarily masked isolated our children because of an irrational fear created by the government and media. We all know that our children have no increased risk of harm from this virus compared to previous years, regardless of any non-pharmaceutical interventions. What our children do have a risk of is significant increases in suicides, overdoses, domestic violence, hunger, and a host of other mental illnesses caused by guidelines and mandates that are solely focused on a virus that has well over a 99% survival rate, if even infected. The endless cycle of mandates and government overreach has no exit strategy. Ultimately, the people need to have the ability to to do what's best for them and their family. All mandates and restrictions on our children need to be eliminated. If people feel safer abiding by the recommendations from public health officials, they have that right. But to levy them against all children is irresponsible and dangerous. We need to stop treating everyone as sick until proven healthy. What if we suddenly decided to treat all alleged criminals as guilty until proven innocent? What are we teaching our children? Mandating masks never worked. Testing never worked. Mandating lockdowns never worked. Contract tracing never worked. They all just ruined minds, relationships, businesses, opportunities, and dreams. Open the schools, ditch some masks and distancing, and get back to common sense living. Thank you, and I hope you all take this to heart, because this is coming from a passionate and caring parent of the future generation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. I certainly appreciate your thoughts and your input. Jason, do we have anyone else?
Yep, we do have someone on the line. Hold on one second.
Great. Thank you. Hello, you're on.
She just stepped away for one moment. Hold on one second. Caller, go ahead.
Hello, you're on.
Hi, this is Grace Dipolito calling from 11 Allison Way. Thanks for taking my call. Sorry. Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, you're on. Go ahead. This is Keith calling. Good evening.
Hi, who are you? How's everybody doing? And I hope all is well. It's Grace Dipolito calling from 11 Allison Way. Thanks for taking my call. Sorry.
I can, we can hear you.
Okay. Sorry, if you can't hear me, let me know. I got a little bit of a connection here at work.
I can hear you.
I have a question about the setting, the classroom setting that you posted.
Yep.
So basically, what I'd like to know is, so there is like four rows of seatings at four seats each?
Yep.
So how is that? Are you guys going to think about using other space to fit in more kids? Like spread them out? You know, I know you're trying to do the three feet distance, but are you going to use other spaces within the building of each school? Such as like the cafeteria or the gymnasium? Is that possible?
Yep. Mr. Malone, would you like to take this, sir?
Yes, I will, Mr. Chair. Absolutely. Every space available. Certainly, at the high school, we have large instruction rooms. We have auditorium, we have the gym, we have the gym in each building. We have purchased and are renting tents for outside as the weather increases. All of outside would be an option for all of us, certainly the cafeteria during non-eating time. What we have to be a little bit mindful of is whatever space we typically use inside is we need to maintain it being clean and disinfected when we're switching groups and doing all those pieces. But yes, absolutely. Some of our K4s really don't have a lot of options or additional spaces, but we will be flexible in all the spacing we're using. We do have to be a little bit mindful that we have to continually clean these areas even during the day. But yes, almost any creative option as far as additional spacing will be used.
Okay, great. So that's what I was wondering, is the like gymnasium, like the gym will be used as classroom space or the stage even for, you know, small specialists or classes, et cetera. So I think you guys have it. You have great ideas there. I'm all for the three feet, and I think this can be done, because, well, I know it can be done because other towns have been doing it. So even starting this week or next week, they're already starting to phase in. So you got to look forward to this and move forward. Another question I have is, will the, so the children are going to go, still a proposal, I know, the children are going to go a little bit longer each day. Will they have gym as well available, depending on the weather, if it's a good day outside? Is that an option? Have you guys talked about that?
Mr. Malone?
Right. So as far as the elementary students, which would be the K4s in the Ryan School, once they're returning to a full schedule in May, that will return to a full regular schedule. That would be original, would be a traditional schedule you would have experienced last year before we went remote in March. So yes, all those experiences that go along with that would go with that. We do have to be a little bit mindful about mitigation strategies, distancing. There is guidance out there specific to PE classes, both indoor and outdoor, around spacing, mask use, type of activity. The distance between the individuals is actually larger in the PE guidance. It's up to 10 without masks, even if you're outside. So there is some specific guidance that goes with that. So we'll make those modifications. We'll use our mitigation strategies, but certainly our intent that students are experiencing as much as possible the same elements they would be pre-pandemic.
Okay.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Malone. Thank you for calling.
Those are my two questions I had. So thank you so much for doing everything planned for, and we hope to hear this happen soon.
Yep, great. Thank you for calling in.
I appreciate your time.
Jason, do we have someone else there?
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Do you have another caller?
Go ahead, caller.
Hello?
Hello, you're on. Go ahead. Yes, you're on.
My name is Marlene. I'm calling. I'm one of the RLA parents, and I was calling to see that there's no, there's going to be no change to RLA. But the issue that I'm having is if you guys do go back, I believe we have to give two weeks notice by the end of the term to get back to school if we choose to. So we just finished the term, so that means that leaves us out for nine weeks automatically?
Mr. Malone?
That is technically in line with the reopening plan. Our priority right now is going to be getting the hybrid students in under the four hour schedule and in the three foot distancing, getting a sense of that, where our comfort level is. We're very open to increasing and having students from RLA come into the in-person learning, but we want to make sure we do it safely, that we're considerate of that. And again, it's a phased in piece that will both have in April students moving into a four hour schedule and not till May moving into a full day schedule. So in that timeline, that does bring us closer to the fourth quarter. If things go smoothly and and we we don't have any hiccups and we can ensure safety, I'm sure there's an opportunity where we may look at to expedite that process.
Okay, so right now I would be looking at another nine weeks to get back to a hybrid?
Is there is there a barrier with with moving to the to the hybrid right now?
I'm sorry?
So my, I guess my question is, are you waiting for more in-person time before you make that decision?
Yes, because we're full remote right now, but you know, I would prefer, I would prefer to get back in school all time.
Right.
So I can get back to work, but
Superintendent.
If it's, I just need to know, if I have to give the two weeks notice by the end of the term, the term just ended, so now we're in a new term. So do I have to wait nine more weeks to put in my notice?
Superintendent Malone.
That will push me to the, basically, the end of the year.
I can read in our reopening plan, yes, it does say that to maintain consistency in classroom cohort assignments, and now we're going to bundle those cohort assignments, requests to participate in the district implemented model and withdraw from RLA would be considered on a quarterly basis with that two week advance notice. So I think what you would do is as we near quarter four, you would you would make your principal aware of your, that you would you wish to move to that. We need to assess the potential in the class spacing in every class prior to putting the RLA students in at quarter four or thereafter. So you are correct, it's quarterly, and it's with a two week notice prior to the start of the quarter. So if that is a request you have for your principal, you would submit that. Whether or not we can manage the RLA requests all the way through, we'd have to look at once the phased in approach starts.
And I'm not sure about the the nine weeks. Our quarter end is going to end in April, which would coincide with this transition piece. So even by the start of the fourth of the fourth quarter, we would already be in the full remote port. I don't know what school your child attends, but the full remote portion for all of our elementary students by May, and that quarter has already started. So if you're waiting for the full in person, that's likely going to coincide with that quarter transition anyways.
Okay. And now it'd be sometime in May?
Correct. For the full day. Correct. For the full day, elementary implementation, which I think is what you're, you're looking for, correct?
Yeah, so where are the two?
Yeah, so actually those, those timeframes actually fairly coincide with each other.
Okay.
That's so hand in hand with those staffing needs. There are a lot of details, a lot of moving pieces. It's hard to describe every scenario. But, um, for example, some RLA teachers are accommodated or have an ADA accommodation where they're teaching from home, all of the students that are at home. Some of our RLA teachers are in the building and are teaching students at home. So each one of those scenarios will play out. Well, is the RLA teacher in the school in an empty class? So can some of her or his students come back to the school in that class? So there's, there's just a lot of moving pieces that need to be considered to get to that place.
Most likely they would be getting different teachers if they were to go back?
That, that's not in our plan.
Okay, so the remote learning people would still be the teachers?
No, no, no. If you're leaving RLA, you would be placed in a new classroom of, of full-in-person people. RLA teachers are specifically dedicated to RLA.
For RLA, okay.
If you are leaving RLA, yes, your teachers, your teacher would change if you're leaving RLA, yes.
Now, at, at high school, again, it's different. The high school RLA students are in the course with that teacher. So again, it, there are a lot of, the details shift, um, with each situation. If a, if a high school student can, uh, once that quarter four comes and can fit in all of those classes as well, they're all the same teachers at differing grade levels. Uh, the RLA teacher who's not in the building would not be available to coming back to the building. So that, I don't know your situation. You certainly don't have to, uh, say that on TV, but, um.
Mrs. Regan, can I offer this? It's a public meeting. We'd like to get as much input. Pam, could you please reach out to the superintendent or Mrs. Regan tomorrow? Myself, I'll be more than happy to. What we're trying to do tonight is convey the direction and the plan that we're going as a district, not necessarily, although certainly empathetic to everyone's, uh, personal situation. You know, we're, we're trying to get input and information. So I'll be more than happy to sit and talk with you anytime as will Mrs. Regan or Mr. Malone.
Great, so I can, I'm sorry, what was your name? So I can reach out to you and Mr. Malone?
My name is Keith Sullivan. I'm the chairman of the school committee. If you go on the district website, you'll find my address there.
Yeah.
And Mr. Malone is our superintendent. You'll also find his email address up there. He, he will probably be the better person to speak to because he's the one that actually runs the district. But either one of us will be more than happy to work with you.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
Have a good night.
Thanks, you too. Jason, I see you have someone in the lobby.
I'm going to admit them now.
Okay. Good evening. Hello?
Okay, it looks like they dropped off. I'll bring in another call.
Okay.
Hold on one sec.
Sure.
Okay, caller, go ahead.
Hi, um, my name is Jessica Rossio. I live, um, at 936 North Street. Um, and my question is, um, sort of also regarding the Remote Learning Academy. So it's been stated that, um, none of the changes would have, would affect the Remote Learning Academy in terms of staffing or scheduling. Um, I do, my son is in the fourth grade in, in the Remote Learning Academy. My concern is I've seen that specialists, um, would be, uh, would still be a part of the schedule. So how would that affect the students that are getting taught by specialists right now? Like the fourth grade at the North Street is being taught by the phys ed teacher and the digital learning teacher. So how would that work? Would they lose their teachers?
Mr. Malone?
Um, no, they would not. The, our, those, those staff members, we have no plans to remove them specifically from, uh, the RLA. Where we're gonna have to get creative is actually when we go to the full day is how we're going to staff specialist in some other classes for the in-person learning piece. Um, you know, we always look at enrollment. We always look at all kinds of aspects with staffing. We have staffing changes frequently during a school year. Um, and there's no reason to think we, we wouldn't at this point. However, there are no plans to make any changes to RLA for the sake of moving a teacher out of RLA so that they are teaching in-person classes, classes or anything like that. Our intent in this planning is if the enrollment of the RLA stays the same, that we would have the same corresponding level of teachers assigned to the RLA.
Thank you, Mr. Malone.
Very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Rossio for calling in.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you. Jason, do we have, you heard someone was buzzing in, do we have, uh?
Not at the moment, but I would give it just a little bit more time to see if they can call back.
Just take this time while we're waiting to, uh, remind the public that we do have our regularly, uh, originally scheduled school committee meetings, scheduled for March, is, uh, still taking place on March 10th, where we'll, uh, commence doing our regular monthly business. Um, if we don't get any callers, I certainly would like to thank everyone that came, uh, this evening. Thank the people that called in. Um, certainly your input, uh, is very important to us uh, as we move into hopefully the next phase of getting some more in-person time for our children. So with that, I'll check back in with Jason.
I guess, Mr. Chairman, we do have a caller.
Okay, could you put him through, please?
Caller, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Colleen. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, my question is, um, I'm not understanding when they were saying that the days are going to be longer, um, to have this coming back full-time. But my main concern is, is that people are pushing for in-person because, um, especially for the K through four group, age group. My question is though, is anybody actually thinking about the teachers and the teacher and aides? One is stating that, you know, having this COVID vaccine is not a cure. So it's going to be affecting the teachers, the teachers aides, and everybody in there. And then the contact tracing of our children bringing it back to our home. I myself know somebody, um, who their family has experienced the person having COVID three times over the past eight months.
Okay, Colleen, could I just get your address for the record, please? I'm sorry.
Yes, it's Patton Road.
Thank you.
And yes, uh, during the presentation, I'll, I'll just leave it in briefly and then turn the floor over to Mr. Malone. We have given consideration to our teachers and our aides, um, with regards to this plan. And we're not, uh, rushing just to push kids into school because, uh, uh, that's what we feel, uh, we should be doing. As I spoke about earlier, um, we've had, uh, from the outset, when we voted early on for our hybrid plan, uh, we began even right then in September, talking about how we can, you know, get kids more in-person. Teachers, aides, uh, students' families, they all recognize, health professionals now, the importance of having in-person learning and the detriment that it's been having on our children. Uh, and certainly, you know, we value our teachers, we value our aides, we value our staff, our custodians, our secretaries, our nurses, and we're not making these decisions blindly, putting any of those people at risk. Um, with that, if, uh.
I'm trying to say that you are, and in fact, my children go hybrid. So I do understand the importance of having in, you know, having the children go in and actually learning with in-person teaching. Um, that wasn't what I was trying to express. I was basically trying to express that I've heard several people come online saying how, you know, they feel that the district isn't doing enough in pharmaceuticals and whatever else that person was talking about. I myself have witnessed firsthand these numbers of people getting COVID. I understand that, and I'm just saying I would hate to have the teachers be more at risk. I would hate for the children to be around other children and bringing it home to other families. Um, it just kinda makes more sense to me to try to bring in maybe K through four going full-time and the older children being more of the same way that they're doing now with the remote and the hybrid. Um, and granted, everybody needs to go to work. We all still have bills and the world keeps spinning. So I just was wondering, um, how are we going to proceed with the, the cleaning of the buildings, the spacing, the room needed to have lunches, lunches, and the extreme cost this is going to cost instead of trying to hold off and bring in the K through four full-time and then possibly then moving on for next year, having everybody come back and have the summer to prepare for all of this?
Mr. Malone?
Sure, uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Thank you for your, your thoughts on that. And, and certainly we, we understand that there is concern out there. And I know you had a concern about cost. I, I, I can assure you, um, you know, we're over a million dollars already in costs specific to COVID and mitigation and cleaning. We'll continue that, that commitment to whatever it takes to keep our people safe. We have mitigation strategies in front of us. We've looked at the research and the data in regards to the distancing, which is kind of the key issue about getting everyone in. DESC is producing a new study around the three-foot distancing. There's clearly no indication out there through the science that there's an increased spreading of this virus. Uh, when we look at the distancing piece, I think we, we can definitely consider, and it was part of this presentation, is that likely if we do have cases in the district, we will have a larger number of individuals identified as close contacts. I think that's going to come with the territory. However, we do believe the mitigation strategies that we've put in place, those ones that we are, uh, committed to looking at further with the pool testing and some other aspects with that, along with the vaccination. We do believe these areas mitigate many of those risks. We are open to looking at all, all possible responses to this, any of the mitigation strategies we haven't thought of. We've brought in the outdoor spaces. We're looking at every aspect of this. And certainly our highest priority, student and staff safety, will always be that from day one. And, you know, one of the pieces we continually look at is the data. And if the data indicates that we have an in-school spread or there's a significant community rise and that dictates to us that we need to pull back as an entire district and move to hybrid or remote, we've already done it. We'll do it again if we have to. So we respond to the safety needs of everyone involved. And just kind of to your point around prioritizing, I think you said K4, we are prioritizing K6 in that phased-in model and looking to having them in full days in May. Um, and we're looking for more time at the secondary level. We're trying to fine-tune to see if that's at least a minimum of an additional hour or more than that. But, um, we agree that this is scary, this is frightening, but we do believe the process and the ability to move in and out of this, depending on any data that is concerning, will help us be successful with it.
Thank you, Mr. Malone.
I appreciate everything in the, you know, the options that you brought forth for all of us, our parents, you know, um, and I appreciate all of that. Again, it's just looking from the outside in. Like I said, my children go hybrid. I have no problem with them going, um, you know, for, we do it every other Wednesday. I was just thinking where we're coming almost to the close of, uh, an end of a school year and kind of do a, a model, not with everyone, but like they, I, I set K through four only because I figured they're the ones who need it the most. Usually the kids that are in the five to sixth grade, yes, they do, but they're also almost hitting junior high. So they're kind of a little bit more able to follow direction and be able to do remote a little bit better. Um, so I mean, my whole thing was just like air conditioning, the safety, I understand going outside, I understand all of that. It just kind of seems like everybody seems to be saying that this COVID vaccine is a cure and it's just, it's not a one-time. These people can have it more than one time. Like I said, I've heard of a friend's family who has had it three times within the past six months. So again, as long as it's, it's safe for the children and mostly it's safe for all of the administrators and the teachers and the aides, you know, they're the ones that are helping raise our kids pretty much. And they're the ones that are giving all of their time. And I would just hate to see that, you know, with all of these new kids being introduced, we've all kind of been in a cluster with the same group of kids that are then in hybrid. You know what I'm saying? To then start bringing in slowly other people. Um, you just don't want to start bringing everybody in all at the same time because then you're not gonna know where it's coming from. And I see it with the Methuen schools. I've seen it with, um, I have family that's teachers in Methuen and Wilmington and Barrecker, and in fact, Methuen did not even go to school, uh, for two weeks after, uh, Thanksgiving, two weeks after Christmas, New Year's. They wanted to keep it all contained because people have the ability to go somewhere and they're not knowing if they're picking it up or they're not. And then there's a two-week time frame, you know, frame for others to catch it.
All right, Colleen, thank you. I appreciate it.
And I just wanted to voice that. It's not a cure just to get the COVID test, um, vaccine.
Sure, we understood it. I just, I thank you for calling and I can assure you, uh, we are fully committed if it becomes not safe for students and staff for us to pivot back, so, um.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for calling in. Chase?
Yep, give me one more minute.
Sure. Anyone else in the lobby, Jason?
No one on the lobby.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, caller, go ahead.
Hi, uh, Patrick Matzek, 38 Quell Run.
Good evening, how are you tonight, sir? Hello, you're on, this is Keith Sullivan.
Yes, um, I have two questions.
Sure.
Um, one of the questions is in phase two, are there gonna be after-school programs available extended day?
Great question. Mr. Malone?
Uh, caller, are you talking about, uh, extended day alphabet or are you talking about curriculum activities? We have talked with Alphabet today. Uh, we had talked to them a little bit about that. They are willing to work with us once we go to a full-day aspect. We'd have to talk about that a little bit in regards to space available, cleaning, all those other aspects. They do have the alternative location going right now at the Greater Lowell Assembly of God. If that is not something that we would be able to set up as part of our all-back-in-full in May, uh, we could look at setting up some transportation that may get individuals to the Lowell Assembly. But, um, we are looking at that right now. We don't have any final answers, but it's certainly a, a definite consideration for ours, once we're back into a full day at the elementary schools.
Okay, my second question is a little more hypothetical, I guess. Uh, say someone gets sick of COVID and they have to be out for two weeks. Uh, usually people, usually the kids would rely on, uh, a hybrid schedule where they would stay at home to learn. Um, how about work?
Uh, pretty similar to what you just said and similar to what we've done. So our practice, uh, definitely for the several, past several months is any student that is out for medical reasons, particularly if they're isolated, they're fine, but they need to be isolated because they're a close contact, or there's a family member at home sick, or they're sick themselves, uh, we have allowed them to participate remotely. We don't foresee where that would change because to your point, we would, yeah, this pandemic is not going away. So we would expect that students may become symptomatic. They may not test positive, but they may be symptomatic or they may be a close contact. So although some of the strategies relating to close contact have expedited people in their timeline. their timeline specific to testing out of being a close contact, we still fully expect there will be students who will be missing time at school specific to COVID. And we still anticipate that we'll be working with them as remote students, the same as if they were in the building.
Okay, um, thank you. I, I do think it's a little bit fast, but if you guys, uh, feel that it's time, then, um, I'm on board, so.
Well, thank you, Patrick, and thank you for your questions. Very poignant. Appreciate your calling in, hope you have a good evening.
Yeah, you too.
Thank you. Jason?
Uh, yep, give me about 20 seconds, I'll bring them on. Yep, hold on one sec.
No problem.
Hi, I'm Grace again here. Um, I have a question on, uh, Ted.
Hello?
I can't hear you. I can hear myself, but I can't hear you. So I have a question on...
Who is this? Can I just get your name and address on the record, please?
This is, yes, Grace Diplo, 11 Alton Way. I do have a question on, on catching up with the, some students have fell behind. I do have a question on whether you will be offering summer classes.
Good question.
Yeah, we, this is a live discussion we've been having regularly for the past month. Uh, we do believe that we are going to have opportunities over the summer, uh, both to fill in some gaps and to ramp up students for the following fall. We have, uh, special education summer programming that we have to consider. We've been talking to Alphabet for their summer camp as well. Uh, and we're also anticipating that there may be some opportunities with DESE for funding for summer programs. So we, it is an active piece we're looking at. Um, we really, uh, want to use this phased in approach with the return to school to really truly understand where our learning gaps are for all our students so we can target what some of that programming may look like. Uh, but it is certainly a live conversation about increased summer opportunities for students because we know that we want to have success going into the final quarter of this year and make sure our students have the best in-person school experience. But we also want to, uh, take advantage of any opportunities to ramp them up for the following fall opening.
Superintendent Malone made that as well, um, that there's the academic concerns that we have for students, but we also realize that some students have never seen the inside of a school. Maybe they haven't seen the inside of a cafeteria or the lunch line. So we're going to look for some social, um, time at the school as well. This is, as Superintendent Malone said, a very live discussion. Uh, how do we provide orientations for more than just the kindergarten students potentially for the first, second, and those students that have never, as I said, um, experienced the North Street, Trahan or Rock and/or even middle or high school? So that is, um, of, of great concern to us and we certainly look forward to planning as many opportunities as we can, academics and, uh, social development opportunities for our students.
Okay, that's great to know. That was the other question, sorry. I meant to ask earlier, someone asked me and if they were going to have, uh, if Tuxbury was going to have opportunities for students that, well, all students fell behind and somewhere or another, doesn't matter, K through 12, some more than others. Um, but, um, you know, to, to have that, um, you know, as an opportunity, um, will be well appreciated, so. And if we can, you know, us parents take advantage of it, that would be great. Um, good question in regards to when, when will you let parents know, uh, in the community, uh, when the phase, the phase in will happen? Like if we need to arrange anything as far as transportation goes or, you know, as far as, um, making her, um, maybe give the key to our, our kiddos to get on the bus safely, give them some type of instruction, et cetera?
Yes, all, yes, all of that. And any changes as we've done, as when we added the Wednesday, if you're on the hybrid, uh, we try to message out as early and as soon as we can. Certainly, as I said, this is the very first step. Um, this is important for us to get input, to have, uh, stakeholders have an opportunity to come in. Maybe there's some things we haven't thought about, so, um, yes, we're absolutely going to message out. As I said earlier, we still have our regularly scheduled school committee meeting scheduled for next Wednesday. I'm sure there will be continued discussions around this and yes, we will definitely message out to all of our families, any changes that we're making.
Okay, greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Jack. Have a good night. Jason?
Thank you so much for everything.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Thank you. Yep, give me about 20 seconds.
Yep.
Caller, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Maria Corviallo. I'm on Cart Path Road.
Thank you, Mrs. Corviallo. How are you doing this evening?
I'm doing well, thank you. How are you?
Good, this is Keith Solomon, the chair of the school committee. How can we help you this evening?
Sure, um, so as a parent of a second grader, what they're doing, I've really been trying to stay apprised of all the developments related to getting the kids back to school. And I've been keeping a pulse on parent concerns as a doing North Street PAC officer. I've engaged with both the superintendent and the TTA. And I have to say to date, the communication received from both sides have been very disjointed. It's unclear which side is being forthcoming and what we can do as parents, um, to help. So I'm really thrilled to hear that the motion for open negotiations was passed. So first of all, thank you for taking a step in the right direction.
You're welcome.
The lo, the longer that this goes on, I feel that the more divided we become as a community and the lack of communication and plan is really perpetuating an environment of us versus them, which isn't where we want to be. And the longer we go without tangible actions, the higher the frustration levels become. So as a parent, I would truly implore those involved in the planning process to share information with the parents. We need to know what the teacher's criteria is for a full return to school and why the majority of teachers continue to vote against going back to full-time teaching. If there's anything you need from the parents, please let us know. Many of us are eager to help in any way we can to support the kids getting back to school as soon as possible. I know we've all been working hard to support our children, but they're missing out on a fundamental growth aspect that can't be taught by us. The social emotional impact is glaring and our children need to return to some level of normalcy. They've already lost a year of school development and life. We've seen various Catholic and private schools do this successfully all year as well as neighboring communities launch their returns. With proper use of precautions such as masks, capping classroom sizes and quarantining when symptomatic, the spread is very low even without vaccines. And this was shown in a recent analysis by three centers of disease control and prevention researchers. Due to this, I'm really having a hard time wrapping my head around the need to add an additional two phases. In a short period of time, this adds further change and inconsistency for our children and upheaval for working parents. Please help us get our children back in school full time or at the bare minimum. Let us know that you can, so each family has the time to determine if the Tuxbury Public Schools are able to meet the educational needs of their children and if not, alternative solutions can be sought. I'd like to end by just asking what, if any of the presented plans have been approved by the TTA? And if none have, what is the timeline to do so? And what is the mitigation plan if they vote against your strategy?
Well, uh, Mrs. Corviallo, thank you for calling in. Thank you for your input. Um, I share a lot of those same concerns. Um, I will say this, we, there has been a significant development, um, with regards to negotiations and a recent case that came from the Division of Labor in Massachusetts. Um, all districts, uh, that I'm aware of are operating under the premise that decisional bargaining need to take place, needed to take place regarding the models. The Division of Labor has clarified that for school committees, um, and has clearly stated that, uh, it's in the purview of the school committee, um, and that although we have to bargain, we just have to bargain the impact of that decision. Um, I'm sorry, impact, um, we have to bargain the impact of our decision, whatever it may be. So at the beginning of the year, we needed, because we were operating under the assumption that we were engaged in decisional bargaining, those are mandatory subjects, that's what the law requires. That's the word that we gave to our union and our families and our community that we weren't going to breach the law. Now that we have clarification in the law that says we only have to engage in impact bargaining, that's what we're doing. We're impact bargaining with the union. We have never stopped negotiating, talking to, um, I meet with the union almost regularly on a weekly basis, often, uh, twice a week. So, um, to be quite honest, I think we're much more prepared than other districts because we have gotten there. Um, but I don't think we need a contingency plan and I'm not necessarily confident that, um, we need the teacher's approval to be able to go have more in-person time. What we do need, you know, is their participation. What we need is their buy-in. You know, those are the people that are critical to providing the quality of education that we've grown accustomed to here in Tuxbury. And regardless of legalities, we need our teachers to feel safe, we need our students to feel supported, and we think this plan is going to get us there. I understand it's not fast enough for some, it may be too fast for others, but we think this is a step in the right direction. We think it's absolutely critical to get our students in prior to next year so kids can back, get back into a routine. We think there's been significant mental health issues that we've seen all across the spectrum, all the way from K all the way through 12, that if we get, as soon as the, the faster we can get our children in and back in normal, uh, routines, the better it's going to be for our kids and ultimately our families and the community. So, um, that's, that's where we're at. Chris, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I think, Mr. Chairman, you summed it up very well.
Thank you. Mrs. Corviallo, I appreciate your time and your input.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Jason, do we have anyone else?
Yep, I do have another caller on the line. Hold on one sec. Okay, caller, you're on the line.
Hi, my name's Jen Kelly. I have, um, three kids in the system on Sesame Street.
Okay.
And I apologize if this has been asked and answered, but I was noticing on phase one, um, for the seventh grade, seventh and eighth, um, that they're still getting dismissed at 11:30, they don't get the extra hour. Can you explain why?
Mr. Malone? Sure, it, I think the caller is describing phase one. In phase one, we, uh, all students return to school five days a week. However, we maintain the current, uh, hybrid schedule, which is a four-hour in-person schedule. Uh, that's all in phase one. There is no increased time in phase one. Increased time comes in phase two. Uh, that's, uh, on or about the beginning of May when K through six returns to a full day of school. And, uh, the middle school and the high school return to a minimum of one hour additional schooling, uh, as we still pursue opportunity to see if we can get them to a full day as well. So in phase one, all students maintain their current hybrid schedule. The difference is all students are in five days a week.
Okay, now why in phase two, why wouldn't the middle school go back full time?
So one of the aspects we have to look at, and there's a priority coming out from DESE specific to, uh, prioritizing, uh, elementary students, uh, which we also agree with. One of the aspects we're going to have to look at across the board is staffing and prioritizing additional staffing to elementary, uh, school students, our youngest students and our most needy students. We're looking at ways we can support that at the middle school and the high school, uh, but we don't have the confidence as of yet that we can support more than an hour. But we are hopeful that with some additional staffing and some creative scheduling, again, that's pushing out to mid-May at this point. By that time, we'll have some solutions to that.
I really hope so because my eighth grader is, my eighth grader is struggling, um, with the remote. Um, my other question is, have you guys considered children on IEPs to start earlier, going the four days as opposed earlier than the April date for the elementary?
Right, we have already been following DESE guidance about high need students, which includes, uh, a criteria of special education students, English language learner, homeless students. Uh, the criteria established by DESE, we refer to them as cohort C students. Those students have already been engaged, uh, for over a month now in increased learning opportunities during the hybrid model. So, uh, students who are on a traditional schedule, if they are, do have an IEP, um, certainly we want to work as, as the best we can to support them in any way we can. But right now, that high needs designation is specifically identified by DESE and we do have those students currently coming in more than the two days a week and a Wednesday, every other Wednesday.
Well, my son was excluded from that and he's been struggling. Um, and I had his teacher back, back me up saying that he does better in school and remote. Um, so I feel that was a failure on our part because there are special needs kids that didn't get to go in the five days and my son is one of them that is struggling. Uh, and I've been asking since October for him to go in five days and I just keep getting the runaround. Uh, so that's a little disappointing.
Right, well, that criteria is established by DESE, not by Tuxbury Public Schools. So that crit, criteria to meet the high needs designation is designated by DESE. So that's what we follow to determine which students qualify for high needs. But I think the most important piece here is to get all students in for as much time as absolutely possible, and that's what this plan is designed to do.
No, and I a hundred percent agree and I believe just for their mental health, they need to be in full time. Um, I just hope the middle school can catch up and we can go in full time in May like everybody else.
Right, right.
But that's all I really had of my, those are really all my questions.
Great, thank you for your call, Mrs. Kelly. We appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Bye-bye.
Bye now. Jason, do you have anyone else?
Uh, no one else at the moment, but we might want to just give it another minute for the stream to catch up if anyone else wants to call in.
And I'll take this time once again, I feel like a news anchor here, to, uh, people, we do have a regularly scheduled school committee meeting scheduled for next Wednesday, uh, March 10th, where, I mean, we will be talking about this in the other regular business of the month.
Actually, I have one person bear with me one sec.
Great.
Caller, go ahead.
Hi, this is Leslie Rosetti on South Street. I have two children, one in the pre-K and one in first grade. And my question is, so A, by 1,000 support, 1,000%, 100%, 1 million% support getting students back at school full time for a multitude of reasons. I'm a work from home mom at the moment. I'm a work-from-home mom at the moment and obviously it puts a lot of strain on the parents, but it's less about the parents and obviously more about the students. Kids forget how to have playdates. They forget how to socialize, which to me is 1,000% important. What I'd like to, I guess, understand is right now we're on phase one, we're contemplating two phases, phase one, phase two, with five days with current, kind of almost like a half-day hybrid type of model. And I guess I was wondering, why is it that maybe we're not considering sending them just full days, five days a week? Like, I guess, why, why is it a two-phase approach when it's simply, you know, two hours at the end of the day? Does it have to do with like lunch? Or I guess, what's the primary driver for not sending the children five days a week, full days?
Sure. Good question, Mr. Malone.
Yes, thank you. Great question. A couple of things, the rationale behind, again, some of this phasing in is one of the massive changes for all of our staff and students in moving towards this is changing the distance between students. That's going to take us time to prepare for one, two, time for our students and staff to get used to. We've got clear indication, indications from our staff. They have some strong concerns about that. We want to make sure we have all mitigation opportunities in place. We want to engage with our teachers to make sure if there's other PPE, other supports we can put in place to make them feel comfortable about that distancing, we want to do that. That's a clear concern for safety for our staff that we want to make sure is in place. And that will take a little bit of time. It will also take a little bit of time in phase one to get everyone used to that aspect. We want this to work. We want it to work well. We want people to feel comfortable and safe. And we want to do this in a way where the concentration daily is on the instruction and the interaction with the students. And a concern would be if we rush into this and we don't have the mitigation strategies implicated correctly. If we don't have our staff feeling safe, then we'll be dealing with more COVID-related issues all day long rather than the educational and support of the students. So completely understand where people would like to have this go at a faster pace, understand that. But also, we want to be respectful of where our staff is at in some of these issues. We want to make sure we do it well. And we want to look at the long-term benefit to not only get students in now, but set us up for a good end of the school year. Look at interventions and strategies we can use during the summer and hopefully have us in the best position possible to start school in the fall with as normal a school experience as possible for all our students.
Okay, no, thank you. I appreciate that. I guess my other question, and someone alluded to it, a caller earlier on about an after-school or before-school programs, right? Where right now, one of my children is enrolled in the Alphabet program, which I, I think is phenomenal. I think it's great that there's a program out there to, to help because I feel that he is getting some social interaction with other students. The fact that he can actually talk to other children and do crafts with other children and just, just play and be a child is something you can't put any type of price tag on at all. I'm a little bit concerned about the, I guess, the comment about availability for after-care at Lowell Assembly God under Alphabet. I've been pushing really hard to try to get my pre-K student to go into Alphabet. And they have basically said to me that that's not an option because of space. So I guess I'm wondering when we go back full-time or even five days a week, how will that? And maybe you're not positioned to answer on behalf of Alphabet, but you know, how will that really be available to all students if they're saying that there's no space to do something for pre-K now?
Well, one of the aspects we have to consider with Alphabet is they're under the same stringent safety considerations that we have. But not only that, they're taking students from across our district. We've co-horted our students at the classroom level, at the school level. And we've done a great job of trying to make sure those cohorts stay separate. Alphabet has been challenged by the fact that they're taking students from multiple classrooms in the same school, from multiple cohorts in the same school, over multiple schools. So it is a challenge for Alphabet. We are certainly talking to them about opportunities they may have for additional childcare opportunities and programming after school. But also DESE has weighed in on some of these things. And, and, and some of the pieces we're looking at is student activities in clubs after school. We've just received about an eight-page guidance on singing and chorus and theater and band. And there are very stringent regulations to this if students are going to engage in this practice. We have stored students engaging in inter-scholastic athletics. That's progressed at a, at a different rate. And we're, we're proud of some of these things, but there will be give and take. Safety is going to be the priority. We continue to make sure our priority is getting our students back in school, prioritizing elementary students. We know there's another aspect that goes on to that with after-school programming. We're working on it. But again, those decisions are going to be finalized and determined based on safety in, in many of those aspects. So we're not going to have answers right away. That's a part of the phase in portion to allow us to develop that and see where that's going to happen. Typically in an after-school program, we'd have to identify the space, identify further cleaning. We may have to employ additional custodians to make something like that happen. These are all things we're willing to do. We just don't know if we're going to be able to do that. So it is going to be a complex issue. We know it's a concern. We know Alphabet is willing to work with us on this. We just don't have any direct answers at this time.
Sure. No, I appreciate that. And my last question, I'm sorry if I'm taking up too much time here. You raised athletics, which I think is another element for these children that is eminent. So my children also participate in athletics and they are in contact sports and they're closer than three feet. What kind of, what makes that different, do you think, than, you know, having to participate in schools? And in school activities where they have to be at three feet apart or more and not be in contact with other people at all? What makes it different?
It's a completely different governing board. We go under DESE guidance. And in athletics or sports, they go under MIA guidance. They have a medical branch. They have all type of implementation strategies and strict guidelines for implementation of the sports. We are governed by DESE guidance on implementation of the education. If you're talking about private or town-wide sports or athletics, they are not governed by such agencies in, in overhead. But, and I think you could find a variety of aspects in that. If you look at athletics activities that are outside the realm of public schools and the MIA, you'll see a varying degree of whether fans can participate, what's the level of competition with students. So it's, it's certainly a dichotomy that's out there, but to be clear, the biggest difference is we are governed by safety regulations under the guidance of DESE. So that is one of the biggest differences in what you may experience out of the community and what you'll see in public education.
Right. Okay. Well, I appreciate your time. I know I've asked several questions, but I am very excited for the town. I'm more excited for the children to have the opportunity to go back to school and be kids and learn from people who have been trained to teach them, not their parents. We teach them in a different way. And just to be able to have that exposure with other children that we can't give them under what we're living in now. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Kelly, and thank you for calling in. Jason, do we have anyone else?
Not right at the moment, but there were a couple of people trying to call in, so give another minute or so. Mr. Chairman, I do have a caller on the line.
Great. Please put them through.
Go ahead, caller.
Hi, my name's Jessica Ryan, thirty body lane. I'm curious about the MCAS. They haven't been discussed at all. What is this? How does the schedule work with the half-day schedule?
Yep. Good question, Mr. Malone.
Ms. Reagan, do you want to look at that one?
Yes. Well, currently, if we were to stay in the hybrid model with cohorts A on Monday, Tuesday, alternating Wednesday, and then cohort B Thursday, Friday, we would be having two separate MCAS administrations for the separate cohorts. If, if we are able to move forward with our proposed plan, then all students would be in person all week. So we would need to administer only one day with A, B, and C in the school. And then we would have to still take into consideration how we would administer our MCAS for our RLA students, who, if you read the memo that we put out through the school committee meeting, need to be in school for the MCAS administration. It would make it more convenient for our students to be together. Not a considered facet really of this proposed plan, but it certainly would make MCAS administration shorter.
And Mrs. Reagan, for Mrs. Ryan's clarity and everyone else, is this a traditional assessment test as we know it, MCAS, or is there anything different slated this year?
You know, it'll be shorter. The students will receive differing sampled questions. So we know rather than the two sessions or three sessions, some of the assessments were in the past, there'll be one session, depending on the grade level. We've posted all of that information on the website. You'll be able to find the exact dates we plan to test. We, we posted them as the week of, so all grades three through eight have a particular week. That is the ELA MCAS assessment. If we're in this phased-in approach in phase one, all those students will be at school at the same time if we go to phase two. And that would be the later MCAS assessments and we'd have our students together.
Mr. Chairman, in, in addition to that, Commissioner Riley has messaged out that the tone of the MCAS would more as a diagnostic tool rather than an achievement test. It still remains an accountability item for districts. So even if it doesn't count towards accountability, it typically is public information is put out there and is comparison for districts and so forth. But the commissioner has committed to the fact that he intends to use it more as a diagnostic tool overall.
Thank you, Mr. Malone.
Did that answer your question, Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for calling in tonight, Ms. Ryan.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Jason, do we have anyone else?
Uh, yep. Hold on one second.
Okay.
Okay, caller, go ahead.
Um, so I am Tracy Kruger and the address is Woodcrest Drive.
Good evening, Mrs. Kruger. How are you this evening?
Good, thank you. How are you?
Welcome. This is Keith Sullivan, the chair of the committee. How can I help you this evening?
So I have a clarifying question for all of the phasing questions. My children are currently hybrid. But my understanding is that if we move forward with the phasing, they go down to three feet social distancing. But the close contact protocol remains at six feet. Is that correct?
Mr. Malone, would you like to handle this, please?
Currently under CDC, we are expecting some new CDC guidance, but that is correct. Under six feet, more than a cumulative of 15 minutes. So that's why we had presented out if going to three feet, although we're not, we see no evidence in the current data around districts that are three feet of an increased spread. What we would anticipate is that we would have a larger number of close contacts identified in situations. We've, we've had a, a, a great success rate here in Tewksbury of even though having positive cases, having a very low amount of close contacts. But likely that would be an adjustment in regards to moving to three feet. Yes.
Okay. And so as a parent who's not comfortable with that, because that, you know, obviously creates a lot of disruptions for kids if they're close contact and that, and quarantined. If the phase is approved, what are there options for kids that are currently hybrid to move to remote?
So we do currently have that option available and we don't anticipate that, that changing that current option right now is that if a, a student was going to move, is currently in the hybrid and was going to move to remote, that they would stay in their hybrid class and participate remotely.
Are you there, Mrs. Kruger?
So you're saying they would remain in their same classes, to the best of your knowledge, and just go full remote with that?
That's the current, you're right. That is the current operation we are utilizing right now. And we don't have any indication that we will be changing that.
Okay. I appreciate your, your input on that.
Thank you, Mrs. Kruger. Have a good evening.
Thank you. You too. Bye-bye.
You're welcome. Jason?
Uh, not at the moment, but I know there has been a couple of people trying to call, so open up for a little bit more.
Okay. We have anyone, Jason?
Uh, still no one else at the moment, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Well, I'll make one final announcement here. Our regularly scheduled, do we have someone?
Uh, no.
Okay. Our regularly scheduled meeting is next Wednesday, March 10th, as is up on the screen. Regular meeting starts at 7:00 PM. We will have our budget hearing prior to that. So we hope everyone tunes in. For those of you that were not able to get in or still have questions or comments, you can email myself or any of my colleagues or the superintendent or assistant superintendent if you have any further questions or input. Jason, do we have anyone?
I do have a caller, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Caller, go ahead. Yep, go ahead. Hello?
I don't think they know on that.
Hello, yep, you're here, sir.
Oh, sorry. Yes, my name's Greg Mar on Patriot Road. I just wanted to get a little clarification on that last point. So teachers, if a student goes full remote, they'll be with the same teacher. So teachers are expected to have a full digital curriculum during this full return as well and be teaching remote.
Mr. Malone?
We've been operating under that, that premise for over a month now. So it wouldn't be a separate curriculum, but there would be modification so that the student can access the curriculum with the rest of the class. Predominantly, that's, that's the method of teaching right now in the hybrid model, the preponderance of our teachers, that they are teaching both the remote students and the in-person students at the same time. It is the model that was established at Tewksbury Royal High School from day one. And it's the preponderance of the model that is utilized by most of our staff right now, that they are not doing separate teaching, but actually doing, teaching to remote students and in-person students at the same time.
Oh, yes. So that's, I understand that. So the, will there be remote students online during the full return classroom? So like, it'll be the same setup as right now?
That is, that is correct.
Okay. So doesn't that remove some of the benefit in terms of, you know, the, the level of attention that the teacher is able to give to the classroom because their attention still has to be divided for that remote class?
Well, most of our teachers have been living that daily in their instruction. Certainly, it would be probably swayed a little bit more to the in-person if that's going to sharply outnumber the students who are remote. But most of our teachers have been operating under that mode currently.
Yes. Well, thank you. I, I appreciate that and I am aware of that. Yes. Well, thank you. I, I appreciate that and I am aware of that. I guess my point is just that as a purported benefit of a full return, the teacher's full attention to the in-class students is really not going to be valid under this configuration. So that's my final point. I appreciate your time, guys, and thank you for everything this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. We appreciate your input. Jason?
Uh, not at the moment, but I did have one person trying to call. I'm going to see if I can get ahold of them.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, would it be a good time to remind anyone who is viewing, we're going to not only have this recording, but we will also post the presentation to our district webpage.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Reagan. Excellent reminder.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a call.
Okay. Please put them through.
Caller, go ahead.
Okay, you're on.
Hi, this is Michelle Backy, 20 Yorki Way, Tewksbury. I was just curious about when the gyms would be back open for sports? And also, what do you think your chances are of getting this put through the union? And having them agree a hundred percent to all of your proposed solutions?
Two very good questions. I'll have Mr. Malone take these. All right. I'll start with the gym question. Our gyms are being utilized at the high school. We do have to be a little bit concerned about the amount of furniture and other alternative items that have been stored currently in our gyms and whether they're going to be used as additional cafeteria space. As far as the gyms during the school day, we also hope that the improving weather outside would allow us to get outside along with the tent for gym and physical activity. If you're talking about the gyms as rental pieces or are you talking about the gyms for in-school use?
No, I don't know if I can follow up with the question. What about reimbursement for all of the money we've been paying to join other or to stay, to stay active in sports for our kids? And we've had to pay other outlets in other communities. Do we get reimbursed for that since we've been paying our taxes? Or just, you know, make it a wash?
Are you talking about youth sports?
Yes.
That's not in the purview of the school. The use of the gym may be in the rental space. Certainly we'd be concerned about our schools being utilized for, uh, other than school activities in the cleaning costs and other aspects that would need to go into that. That's been a major concern of ours. Not to mention that the gyms have been used for other items. As far as youth sports, I'm, I'm not sure that's going to be under the purview of the school department. Are you there, Michelle?
Yes, I am.
Okay. As far as the second question, I'm confident that we're going to be able to get there with the union.
I hope so very much. I'm behind you guys a hundred percent. We just need things to get back and not have this fear factor that's out in the community that really shouldn't be there. Just my opinion.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
You're welcome. Jason?
Uh, I may have one more. I had a missed call, so I'm going to try to bring them on the line as well.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a caller on the line.
Sure. Please put them through.
Caller, go ahead.
Oh, yeah. My name is Scott Austin. I live at 321 Street. And I just have a comment.
Yep.
But first off, I want to commend you all for the hard work you're doing. I have a child in the eighth grade in high school and, quite frankly, it's just time. The kids have suffered. Kids have impaired a lot and it's time to get them back in the classroom. Discipline learners do well online. Average kids don't. And that's just proven. And it's time. I hope we can drive for the children and get them back. There was definitely a time when being hybrid was okay. It was the thing to do. It was the right thing to do. Until more information was known. But we've come a long way. It's been a year and it's just simply time. We owe it to the kids. The kids have been let down. And I urge everybody to do what they can to get the kids back. Thank you very much.
Great. Scott, certainly appreciate your input. All right. I'm guessing that's probably our final caller of the night, Jason.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have no other callers right now.
Okay. With that, I'd like to turn to our vice chairman, Mr. Cutlass.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I have a motion. I have a motion in a second to adjourn tonight's meeting at 7:38 PM. Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Thank you all for attending this evening and thanks for those that called in. But we'll see everyone in a week, next Wednesday, for our regularly scheduled meeting. Night and good evening.